I'd like to call the Nashville Town Council regular meeting on July the 7th tonight. It's ordered, could we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. We invite you to our meeting tonight to give us your guidance and your wisdom. So that we can make the right decisions for all the citizens of our town. Amen.
Amen.
Um, I'd like to welcome tonight, Mark Edwards and Ryan King. They are attorneys with Fields and Cooper. Thank you so much. Do you want to make a quick comment?
Yes, um. I'll try to speak loud through the mask. Um, Ryan is a new associate in the firm. He's already worked on some town work over the month he's been here. But I just wanted to make sure who we were and just introduce ourselves. And Fields and Cooper has been representing the town longer than I know, I think over thirty or forty years. Mr. Cooper and now today, so we're just here to help and don't normally come to the meetings. But when it comes, since Ryan knew Ryan doing some initial work with me. And so since we're representing several towns, I'm gonna make sure he review and you do us. So uh, thank you for your pertaining us and we look forward to doing what we can for the town over the years.
And we thank you. We just want you to represent us well.
Alright, thank you.
Mark, I know you, but would you have it on me just for a minute so I can recognize him?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. There you go.
And Ryan, do you live in Nashville?
No, I live in Rocky Mountain.
Rocky Mountain.
Alright. He's a U.C. Marina native, went to South Carolina College, and all the way to Iowa for law school. But decided you wanna come back. Had a brother that went to Westland. Yeah, my brother. Has some connections to the town, to the area prior to coming with us with that. So uh, he knew Rocky Mountain, Nash County pretty well.
And we have homes available in Nashville.
We do.
He, 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 he been to, he had come to a meeting here before and he mentioned to me just a minute ago that uh, y'all have lobbies for that too. So uh, I think, I think he's getting the message.
Alright.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the rest of the citizens that have come, that took the time to come out tonight to our meeting. We always are excited about having citizens here because we are here representing you. Uh, we have three people that have signed up tonight for public comments. So at this time, I would like to call Diane Parker. If you'll come over here to the podium, give us your name and your address.
R Q.
D A R K E. B R. Parker.
Parker. My name is Diane Parker and I live at 210 Apache. And I'm here concerning about the overflow water that keeps hitting my house.
Ms. Parker, you live at 210 what?
210 Apache.
Apache.
Ms. Parker, how much water damage or how much water did you have this time?
This time it got like three feet. It got my joint to my house, got all my ductwork, all the stuff inside my building and my storage. And it's wiped out all my grandchildren, calling them my daughter.
210 Apache.
210 Apache.
210 Apache. This is the fourth time that I've been here.
Well, we appreciate you coming and letting us know. And Pauline Johnson at 560 Indian Trail, would you please come forward, state your name? Be careful, honey.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Pauline Johnson. I'm at 560 Indian Trail. And there have been a lot of concerns out there. Some homes didn't get water, but those that did is really bad. And someone needs to do something. You know, a lot of people aren't complaining because they don't have water. They didn't get any damages. You know, it just, we got really bad in ninety-nine. And I can remember twenty-sixteen, when it hit in October twenty-sixteen, excuse me. And now this time, you know, it's like no one is showing any concern in our neighborhood because it's a black neighborhood. And that's just how it is. Somebody need to step forward and take care of all the problems that we are having. You know, me myself, I would love for someone to buy my house out. They say, oh, you'll only get the value. I'm fine with that. Give me that and let me go. You know, somebody needs to take charge of what's going on out there. We've mentioned before digging the creeks out deeper. Someone said that can't be done. But then they can go out here and do all this other stuff that happened, you know, on the highway. So that's my concern. You know, I had two starch buildings to get damaged again. Dump work, a lot of stuff. Installation need changing. All that stuff get wet. You know, you gotta replace it. You can't live there like that. So I just wanted to express how I feel about it. Somebody needs to do something. Come talk to us. Um, one of the chiefs from the fire department came through our neighborhood that fried on the nineteenth. And which I missed him because I was at the hospital having a procedure done. And so no one talked to me. And so I'm like, okay, I'm going up here and see what, and I voiced my opinion. And I've called Mr. Jordan a couple of times, but he never replaced my call.
Well, we appreciate you coming and sharing, and I certainly do understand the situation you're in.
Yeah, I just asked you all to take a good look at what's going on. You know, a lot of homes, they're comfortable. A lot of them are renting. They don't wanna go nowhere. They're afraid to make that step, but there are many that would love to be bought out. You know, on the street that I live on, it's a low land bottom. None of those houses should have been built, not a one. Because they were the same ones that get really bad every time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. On next, we have Lynette Richardson. At 540 Indian Trail.
Um, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Lynette Richardson. All I can do is just reiterate what they just said. We live in, when this season part time of year comes, we have to live in constant fear. Because we don't know when the border is coming. And to be in your home one minute and um, just doing whatever you're doing, and then to look down the road, here's all this water coming. And you gotta hurry up and get your vehicles out the yard. You gotta, I've packed up so many times that I said, no more. Whatever gets done, done. I had to put that insurance. That's another bill, but we have to have it. So um, if it's a neighborhood, pretty soon, it's gonna be more than just that water. Somebody's gonna get hurt. Because it could come at any time. So we're just here to see if our presence or just let it be known can make a difference. Thank you.
Ms. Richardson, how much damage did you actually have this time?
This time I didn't have a whole lot of damage. It came up in the yard and stuff, but I'm just around the curve from Pauline now. And just a little higher, but I'm still in the, what's considered the worst flood zone. But it wasn't bad this time.
But I thank you so much for coming and sharing. That's the, we can't do something about something we don't know about, so we appreciate it.
What was your address again?
540 Indian Trail. And again, thank you so much for your public comments. We'll move on now to number six, our old business. This is the Glover Park Improvement Projects, and I'm gonna read the summary, then I'm gonna turn it over to Thomas Gillespie. But it says, part of the interim local agreement between the town of Nashville and Nash County. For Nash County to provide field athletic sports programs at Glover Park. The town is to budget twenty thousand a year for capital improvements at Glover Park. And to hold the money until the council approves the capital improvements requested by the Nash County Recreation and Senior Services for Glover Park. And it, we've got the information that was attached, so at this time I'll turn it over to Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. Before I get started, I would like to just give a update on the merger since I haven't been up here since around January. As everyone know, our spring sports were canceled due to COVID nineteen. But prior to the cancellation, we had around two hundred soccer participants this spring in Nashville at Glover Park. We have roughly around two hundred and fifty baseball, softball, and T-ball teams here at Glover Park. Uh, we had a hundred and sixty kids that would have been playing flag, flag football in Nashville Elementary and Glover Park. And a hundred and ninety adult participants in our adult flag football at Glover Park. Our summer sports right now, we are counseled, but we are having summer camps with limited participation. We're following the protocols that were handed down by the D H, D H H S, such as sanitation, social distancing. And we have limited kids in our camps, which is twenty camps, twenty participants per camp. Uh, the camps that we offered at Glover Park so far have been soccer and baseball. We have baseball camp this week, and we had a baseball camp two weeks ago. Uh, we have football camp and cheerleading camp coming up within the next couple of weeks, and we have a soccer camp at Glover Park as well. Uh, at the moment, baseball is really the only organized sport that we can offer due to the social distancing with COVID nineteen going on. We look to get some type of guidance next week from the governor, whether or not we're going to phase three. And whether we can get to participate with football and cheerleading and our other soccer and our other fall sports. So I just wanted to give a brief update on where we stand so far as far as athletics at Glover Park. Uh, any questions from members of the council?
The two numbers you gave out, the two numbers you gave out at the beginning, would you repeat those for me, please?
Uh, roughly around two hundred soccer participants and two hundred and fifty baseball, softball, and T-ball participants. Those numbers, once COVID nineteen started coming, those numbers kinda started declining, so that's just a rough estimate on right now.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Alright. Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you. Any more questions from any members of the council? I had a presentation put together. Right here, it's a blue PowerPoint presentation. I pass that to Mayor and members of the council, Mr. Lansing. One of the first improvements that our staff and I identified at Glover Park was the baseball dugout improvement project. And this project would consist of installing metal dugout coverings for baseball fields one, two, three, and four at Glover Park. Apparently there are temporary shade structures over each dugout, and these shade structures are failed to cover the entire dugout, which I consider to be a hazard because the ball, a kid may hit a foul ball and it may go between those shade structures on the field. It also would be a problem if it was a slight rain to come. Sometimes during a baseball game, the umpire and staff allow the kids to continue to play if it's just a slight drizzle. So providing a metal structure would eliminate the kids from the inclement weather. We would like to have those dugout covers, coverings installed by the beginning of the fall. And we're hoping to attract several tournaments at the contest within the next couple of years. Well, within the next year. We already have a tournament scheduled at Glover Park this weekend. July eleventh and twelfth. We have three more scheduled, uh, July twenty-fifth through twenty-sixth. Following weekend on July thirty-first through August first. And we have a tournament August, I wanna say August seventh through ninth. So we have four tournaments coming up within the next couple of weeks. And we have different, uh, different participants coming from out of, out of the area, Raleigh, other areas within the state of North Carolina, Virginia, and Georgia. So we would like to try to get those dugouts complete within a timely manner. The check, the cost for those dugouts are eighty-eight hundred dollars, eighty-eight, eight thousand eight hundred dollars for eight baseball field dugouts. And that quote was the lowest quote that we received. And we are in the process of getting dugout coverings installed at another park, so um, that's the same price that was given to us for that as well. If you flip over to the next page, you can see the shade structures that are currently on the dugouts at Glover Park. And if you look at the picture to the right, you can tell if any type of major storm come through, uh, it's just not holding up real well. If you continue to flip over, I provided a picture of a metal roofing that's currently at the Ennis Park in Red Oak. I went and took those pictures today just to show y'all how, to show y'all the layout for those dugout coverings. And the next picture, if you flip over, that's just how the inside of the dugout would look. Any, any questions on project number, project proposal one? So the next project that staff identified was the multi-purpose soccer field improvement project. Basically, this project, we would like to take down and reinstall approximately forty feet of linear, linear feet of chain link fencing. This would be just to give us more room to provide uh, more soccer fields. It would also provide another football field at Glover Park. Not necessarily a football field, but a multi-purpose field, which could be a football field used for a football field as well. We hosted the Veterans Day Classic last year at Glover Park in Nash Central. The, I didn't, the initial idea was to have two football fields at Glover Park. One on, one on the main football field and use the soccer field for a football field as well. Then we identified that we didn't have enough space to provide two fields. We do believe that in the future, this tournament, the Veterans Day Football Classic, if we get through this pandemic, uh, we get football back started. Then we will see a lot of participation in this tournament. And we just wanna have that additional field right there inside the complex. And now the opportunity to use Nash Central Middle School as a football field as well moving forward. It also, as I mentioned, it also would give us additional space for soccer fields. When we first took over uh, the, during the merger, staff, we identified uh, three, the soccer field dimensions. And we had to put our bigger kids soccer field on the football field due to it not being enough space. If we reinstall this chain link fencing, it would give us the opportunity to uh, put the bigger kids on the same side as the soccer, um, I call it the soccer complex. And we have one field for the nineteen-year-olds in white paint, and extend that field for the eleven-to-fifteen-year-olds and adult in yellow paint. So that would just give us an opportunity to be more flexible. We would like to have this done by the end of fall. It's all depending on what projects that the council decide to spend the funding on for this fiscal year. And that project cost is two thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. If you flip over to the next page, I had our GIS coordinator pretty much uh, give us a picture, an overview of um, the fence being extended forty additional feet. And the next page is just a picture of the layout of the soccer fields that are currently at Glover Park. We took this picture today. The first field to the very far left, that's the football field. And that's the ten, eleven-to-fifteen-year-old field, which is a fifty-by-seventy field on the football field. If you move on to the right, that's the smaller field, which is a twenty-by-thirty. Uh, three-to-four-year-olds play on that field. The middle field on the soccer complex area is a, I'm gonna say is a thirty-by-forty. And our five-to-eight-year-olds play on that field. And the field to the very far right is a thirty-by-forty-five, and our nineteen-year-olds play on that field. And we would extend the fencing. If you look behind the baseball field at the bottom, that's a scoreboard. We would extend that fencing just in front of that scoreboard, which give us additional space for other activities.
Uh, Thomas, about how many of those trees are you gonna have to take down?
All the trees. Now, if, the front is the parking lot, so we don't have to bother none of those trees that are very front. The trees that already have been removed behind the baseball field.
How close do we get to the basketball courts?
Um, I wanna say it's not that close. I don't know the exact proximity, uh, exact measurements, but I don't think it would be a problem. It would actually create a barrier between the fields and the basketball court, so I think that would be good as well.
Okay.
Tournament, the tournament you mentioned for next weekend.
Baseball tournament.
Baseball tournament. How much participation do you have locally in this tournament?
It all depends. We have different kids from Nash County that may play on travel ball teams that are in Wilson County, and Weyton County, and Pitt County. We have uh, some travel ball teams that are based here in Nash County, but it all depends. It varies week to week. I'm moving forward to project number three, our project proposal number three. Staff identified this as a scores tower slash office building improvement project. Basically, we would like to repaint the floors at concession stand, bathroom, office area, and the second floor of the scores tower. The contractor was going to remove existing paint and prep floor for new epoxy finish, prime floors with a pre-priming bonding agent. It will be a hundred percent, uh, two coats of a hundred percent solid epoxy coating. And basically, we would like to do this because due to the wear and tear from, uh, it can come from cleats and other items. The floors in the buildings, they need to be repainted. I don't know the last time those floors have been repainted. If I had to guess, the building opened in two thousand and two, and I, I just don't think those floors have been painted since then, but I don't know. I wasn't around here at that time. That's just a guess. We would like to have those, this project done by the end of, um, if possible. Like I said, this all depends on which uh, projects the council selects to spend the funding on. The total project cost is four thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars. If you flip over, I have identified, I have uh, put some pictures of how the floors currently look in the building. And the one on the right is the top of, um, second floor. The, excuse me, the one on the left is the second floor. The one on the, the one on the right is the bottom. Cause the office is located on the bottom floor. The next page just shows the stair, the stairway to the top floor, and a picture of the bathroom floors in the men's bathroom. So if we decide, if the council decides to spend funding on this project, um, I have post, I have put a picture in there of the bathrooms at Ennis Park and Riddle. They had their floors and uh, concession area coated with two coats of epoxy back in, uh, I wanna say it was early February. So the last picture, you see me peeking out, the install, that's how the, that's the finished project. If we decide to select proposal number three.
Thomas.
Yes, ma'am.
In the previous information that we got in our agenda.
Yeah, I, I, I changed. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, in other words, that was untapped for July the first of twenty-one.
Yeah.
So you made that up.
Yeah. Any, any more questions? So the next project we identified was an electrical improvement project at the football field. This project will furnish labor and material to install power wire from main panels to junction box on the wood posts near the football field booth. The power, the power wire will be trinned from wood post to scoreboard and football booth. This was not in the original items that I sent over because I just got a quote from the vendor earlier this week, um, yesterday, to be honest with you. Currently, the, the only power at the football field is coming from the main control panel, which is located between the baseball fields one and two. Two exits on the power and football booth. Um, in the past, staff was running in a stenture cord from the main, from the main uh, control panel, which is between fields one and two. And they were, the stenture cord would uh, extend to a, to a receptacle behind baseball field one. And it would either go, if you flip, if you flip over, you can see what I'm talking about. The, to the left, right there on that baseball fence line is the control panel. They would extend it all the way across baseball field one, baseball field one, to a little outlet right behind center field, the outfield. That would then provide power to the press box and the scoreboard. So what we're looking to do is get a junction box right behind center field, um, which would eliminate us from using the stenture cord to provide power to that booth and the scoreboard. And we would also eliminate us for using the stenture cords uh, for this, uh, home, home football games. And the total, the total project uh, is four thousand dollars. And we, we would like that done if we had a, if we have a football season this year, we would definitely, um, that's definitely high priority for us, that myself. And uh, any questions on the electrical project for the football booth? So, project number five is a Musco Control Link project. This project, uh, Musco Control Link is reliable cost effective system that controls and manages recreation facilities. Uh, there are two ways to manage Musco Control Link. You can directly manage schedules using the web-based system or a Musco app, and you can talk to a full-time control and support staff. This uh, we, we have this system in place at Ennis Park and Riddle. And basically, what it allows us to do is eliminate staff, giving staff keys. We have so many different part-time workers. There may be site supervisors on site, so it eliminates us to give staff keys. We can turn on the lights manually with our phone, so I could be sitting here and receive a phone call that they need lighting in the spot. And I can call, use my phone and call them and turn the lights on just like that. So no keys are allowed to have accessible lights at the facility. Definitely, right during the fall, during the spring season before COVID nineteen, we had to pass our key, we passed our keys to coaches and staff. So this would eliminate us passing those keys out to staff, which could also uh, increase security at the facility. Instead of using staff, instead of using keys, as I say, we would use password to turn on our lights. This is a, um, this project is ten thousand dollars, two thousand five hundred dollars. And I got July twenty-first, it's supposed to be two, twenty-twenty-one, July first, twenty-twenty-one, I was a typo on there.
Okay, that concerned me. Thank you.
Uh, any questions on the Musco Control Link project? Alright, the final project that we identified was the lighting improvement of the project on the athletic fields. And I think this project was also identified by previous staff with the town at Glover Park. This project, we would supply twenty-four fifteen-hundred watt lamp, halide, halide lamps on baseball field one. Supply forty-two fifteen-hundred halide lamps on baseball field two. And supply twenty-eight, um, Musco halide lamps on football field one. So basically, that, we have a technician come through and pretty much give us a whole new lighting system. And um, to my knowledge, I don't think the lights have been relamped or replaced since two thousand and two. We have several light fixtures that are out at the moment. Staff and I, we identified uh, several light fixtures that need to be replaced. And um, just by replacing, relamping the whole athletic fields, it will be more cost-effective and safe to replace all lights at the same time. Instead of placing one that may go out in August, then you gotta pay for a lift to come back out. And if you have another light, go out in September. So we think it's more cost-effective to go ahead and replace all the lights at once. And this uh, project is sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Is, if you break it out per field, it was baseball field one is five thousand five hundred dollars. Baseball field two came out to be five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. And football field, um, relamping came out to be five thousand five hundred dollars. Any questions from the council?
Yeah, there were two, uh, that, one was for forty-two light lamps.
Yeah, that's baseball field two.
Okay, and that was for five thousand eight eighty. And then there was one for twenty-eight lamps for five thousand eight eighty.
Five thousand, five thousand five hundred dollars. The, the baseball field one and football field one, if you look at the power point that I turned in today, those two fields were five thousand five hundred dollars apiece because they had less lamps.
Okay, the information that we have.
Yeah.
Is different.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we have five thousand eight hundred and eighty for forty-two lamps, five thousand eight hundred and eighty for twenty-eight lamps.
Five thousand five hundred for twenty-eight lamps.
Okay, so the information that we have is in for it.
Yeah, that's why I brought in, updated.
So the order of priority on this would be to do baseball field two, since that one has the most out?
The lights that are out, the supply number that twenty-four, forty-two, twenty-eight.
That's just all of it. So what is the priority of these if you could pick, you know, in order? They don't all happen.
It's the lighting project.
Right.
What do I recommend?
Right. Just for the lighting project, like which field is most important? Would it be football that you would want to do first?
Your honest opinion, uh I would do potentially, I think you'd get most uses out of the baseball fields.
Okay.
Yeah. Because we have base we have baseball during the fall and the spring, and if you want if you want to track the tournaments, I think we need to have the a proper light.
Now, would this price remain the same if it was broken out into three separate?
This price was actually um the guy that I spoke with, I think he was speaking with Margarita and Chris, so he just forwarded the email to me.
Okay.
And that's where I got these numbers from.
Okay.
Our in our agreement, our commitment to the county for maintenance improvement, not keeps it for the fields, or you know what that number was?
Twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
Per year.
But yeah, and what I did was I identified several projects.
I understand, but what I'm getting to, the total of everything that you presented with the forty-seven thousand.
Correct.
Now, with the town obligated to to put in twenty thousand, what's the county putting in?
Well, he's basically saying we need to pick and choose what's important to us.
Well, if the county is matching what we doing to come up with the forty-seven thousand, do it all. And we ain't got to pick and choose.
We don't have to pick and choose.
That's what I'm getting there.
I I understand where you're coming from. Uh I can't answer that question for you tonight, but.
Have you presented it to them?
I presented this to y'all first.
You won't get an answer to your ask. You know, we we gonna give you twenty, they give us twenty, they give us twenty, and then we're almost all home free for everything, just about.
And so some of these projects, we don't have to complete right now. I just identified several projects since I don't, you know, since that my staff and I don't have the authority to. To decide which projects we spending the money on, I wanted to give y'all a a menu to choose from.
But Thomas, since you know we only spent twenty thousand, let's say that the county doesn't match any, what would be your, where would you spend the twenty this year?
That's where I was getting at next.
Okay, good.
All right, if you flip over to the next page, it says the summary of improvement.
Okay.
Highlighted in yellow is my recommendation for um this fiscal year.
Okay.
To get the baseball dugout improvement project, to um get the electric electric improvement project at the football field. Get the scores tower and office building improvement project. They came up to around seventeen thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars, which which would give us a ten a contingency. Red at around twenty-five hundred dollars, just in case those prices have went up due to COVID nineteen or um because some of the quotes I received back in February, March, April.
And the county does get all the funding from these tournaments.
Right.
So this is this is part of my problem that I have with this. Number one, when you're looking at the interlocal agreement. The improvements for the facilities, those are definitely under general maintenance, like it explicitly says for general wear and tear, for painting and things like that, so that one I just would bump out completely.
Yeah, I understand what you were saying as far as the uh building and the general maintenance, but if you look at it, if we were doing. Or if the proper staff the staff was doing a proper general maintenance and routine maintenance on the building, it wouldn't look like it look right now.
I understand. And then um when we get to that um, the system that you can use on your phone to do the lights and all. I mean, we have the paragraph in here that states that all revenue is generated all from all of the fees that we charge, all the tournaments that are run and everything that's given over to the county to do things like. Run, give staff hours, pay the electric bills and things like that. So that one too, I feel that's that's more of a county. Cost if that's something that is more convenient for you to run your staff or for you um to to utilize the fields. The other ones I definitely agree agree are are capital improvements that should be things that the town are taking care of, but I I if it were me, I would take those two out. Right from the get-go.
I I understand. I mean, I'm here to present.
And I appreciate it. I appreciate, I know this is probably your master book that shows all the things that need to be done. I just, I think some of that needs to be shared from the county. If we were getting some of the, you know, the fees generated, some of the the income coming from the tournaments and things like that, that'd be a different story, then I would be more inclined to say maybe we cost share on one of those things. Um but for the for the just the turning off of the project, the the other things, I understand the dugout, I think that's very important. Um the electrical to the football field, I think is very important, the lighting. Um so if we want to talk about what's.
Well, we agreed in the agreement to give them twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
A year, so.
But for capital improvement.
Right.
For this.
Improvement, so you know, I'm happy with doing the twenty thousand.
Right.
But I'm like you, you know, with the they with the getting the the our revenue from the tournaments and everything, so.
So if we exclude the scores tower, um not scores tower often building improvement project, is that the four thousand seven hundred and forty-five one? You're talking about this year, um the first two projects will be twelve thousand dollars. We could um add in the additional the additional project or additional funding for the multipurpose soccer field funding improvement project, which would take which would take us up to. Fourteen thousand six hundred eleven dollars. If my numbers right, I'm not a math.
It sounds like it.
In the ballpark.
I think it's fifteen.
That's fifteen.
Fifteen to four hundred and eleven.
That's right.
Which would leave you almost enough to relamp one field.
Right.
Yeah.
If that's what you wanted as far as your priority of things that need to happen there.
Okay. I I'm I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I mean, we can we can take out the scores tower office building improvement project, add the multipurpose soccer field improvement project. And then staff and I, we decide with the priority for which baseball field we can give you that first. I found it.
Thank you. Any question, any more questions to Thomas or any comments from the council?
My concern is is the information that we got in our agenda is different from this and you know, just having to uh. But I appreciate your input, trying to clarify.
Yes, and thank you for the update, too.
Oh, no problem. Um so my next question, I guess with. We be able to spend the twenty thousand dollars on say, say we want to get the dugouts done Friday, um. Get a requisition key, are we able to move forward with um that project?
It's up to the council.
I would say anything within the twenty thousand dollars that we've obligated, you go with it.
Right, either the yeah, the dugout, the electrical, the lights, or the um soccer fields, whichever you.
You can move forward on any.
We said we give you twenty, you know, whether you use it.
That's what you'll get.
That's what I was like to me.
That is your allowance and no more. Now, do I hear a a motion from the council that we approve the twenty thousand for the uh Glover Park Improvement Park?
Motion, motion made.
In the second, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh those opposed, motion carries. So you have twenty thousand dollars to spend wisely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda um is old business six A, and that's the request to amend the code of ordinance of the town of Nashville. And I would like to read that. Since the federal safe drinking water act PL ninety-three dash five twenty-three. And the North Carolina State Administrative Code ISA NCAC ACC require municipal water supplies to have active backflow. And cross connection programs enacted by a backflow and cross connection ordinance to prevent public water supplies. From becoming contaminated by plumbing, water vessels, and other sources of water that typical typical water users have. And we have the uh we went through this during our um agenda meeting, so Randy, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Mayor. So we had the public hearing at the last meeting and we haven't had any comments on it, and I think Lee did a good job of explaining. You know, why this is needed, why we need to put it in place, and and he's working on an implementation plan for it, so. What we need to put it all into motion is the adoption of the cross connection ordinance.
May I ask a question, Mayor, before we proceed? Um and I maybe this is a Lee question. Uh it's. Under the ordinance, under um section thirty-eight, five thirty-five responsibility, see consumer. Lee, it says that the consumer at his or her own expense shall install, operate, test. And maintain approved backflow prevention assemblies as directed by the town, and the consumers shall maintain accurate records of tests and repairs. Made to backflow prevention assemblies and maintain such records for a minimum period of three years. So the consumer now being the citizen, is this, am I reading that correctly?
I believe so, and it it'll be uh, you know, kind of a checks and balances for those records. We'll have a copy um is. You know, enforcing the ordinance, and then, of course, the consumer or customer would want to keep their own copy as well.
I'm just trying to understand. For myself as a consumer, you know, I have a sewer connection, a connection for watering lawns and everything, that as I understand it, we will have to, I will have to have a. Uh apparatus placed on it, so then I, as the consumer, I'm going to be responsible for for this.
Lynn, if you have an irrigation system, you likely already have a double check valve, and that's a backflow device that isn't testable, and it isn't required to be testable. The cross connections that this ordinance requires to be testable are like the funeral homes, where they have their embalming systems physically piped to the water supply. In the event of a water main break, we get negative pressure in the main and it can siphon water out of those, out of that equipment into the system. Those are required to have testable backflow devices such as an RPZ valve, and they have to maintain. Records on when the last time they were tested, if it tested okay, or if it didn't test, and give those records, share those records with the town. What this does, in the event that we can't find a record or we don't give a record, that particular customer we can go to then and ask for that record.
That answer your question? Are any other questions?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, on page nine of the ordinance, under thirty-eight, five thirty-seven. It's all facilities which pose a health hazard to the potable water system must have a containment assembly, okay? Do we have any concerns right now because of this ordinance about? Any um industry or commercial?
We we haven't heard any beliefs, but again, this this has been a requirement to since two thousand and three. Uh even though we didn't have the ordinance in place, those industries, such as Atlantic Foods for Food, because they process food. They already have those devices within theirs within their plants, and they likely are already maintaining these records that we're requiring. We're a little late to the game, but I I would say, you know, the prison has a a massive black flow preventer out there. Um you know, anybody that uses any water and processing at all would already have these devices put into place and on. Are already having a licensed plumber certified and testing backflow preventers coming and doing an annual inspection on them. And we're going to have a local program then that we're now receiving that information and requiring that information. Right, we'll become privy to that information to, you know, support our requirements to the state. Um and. I think I think our our biggest obstacle is going to be finding all the the residential scenarios that would require backflow. I think commercially and industrially, we're we're looking pretty good.
Okay, for for clarification, now all all the residents, residential homes would have to have some type of apparatus on it.
Only the ones with the irrigation, right?
The ones with the irrigation systems, yes.
Just the ones with irrigation.
And if anybody's had a plumber come in and do any type of work, they most likely have a backflow.
Okay.
My house was hooked up to town water two years ago, and it has a check valve in the line.
In the line.
I got an expansion tank right after that, so I know that's a check valve there. Again, it's not the type that you can test, nor does this ordinance require it to be tested.
But but every.
Requirement.
But every resident in town would not be required to to have one of these.
Until such time as they do upgrades to their plumbing.
Then they would need.
Meet the code, they'd have to have it.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions for Randy or Lee?
Who is going to be in charge of checking this? Do we have someone who's certified?
So I'll be acting as the the ORC for the program and we'll be. We'll be working with a couple of employees we have to begin inspections and identifying places that need to be tested. And those, you know, places that would require some further action, then there's there's a company that we're looking at that. That focuses on the administration of the program through the vision of the town or the organization. And their their uh. How they make their revenue is through the tester paying, the backflow tester paying the fee to them. And you know, they work for a a flat a flat fee for the town.
So we would not have to have a certified person to.
We wouldn't need a certified tester, no, but we do have to have uh the cross connection ORC, which would be myself.
Lee, what is an ORC?
It's the operator in responsible charge. We've got one for wells, distribution, cross connection, and collections.
Any other questions?
I was looking at the penalties. Um the maximum penalty is ten thousand dollars. And it looks like it can be appealed forever, and I understand deprocess, but by the time this came to fruition, you know, our system may be poisoned.
So that would be, I think, at the time, the conversation would would come with um our new guy, Field Cooper.
But wouldn't that be like an emergency situation where you all would just go in, fix what needs to be fixed, and then we could figure out the price of it later?
We could fix it if it needs to be fixed, or we could.
Or just shut the water off.
Water off.
Right, that would probably get someone to.
Right.
I have one other question on page ten.
Mm-hmm.
This is under thirty-eight, five thirty-seven. Um B, no persons shall fill special use tanks or tankers containing pesticides, fertilizers, other toxic chemicals, da 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 da. Okay, would that include anyone doing pressure washing? You know, they fill up tanks.
If someone's filling up a tank for pressure washing, um unless we're there to witness it, I guess, you know, for lack, but we would expect that. They're they're holding the hose and, you know, creating their own air gap between the portable system and the tank that um they're filling.
I answer it because it's a lot of pressure washing being done because we have a lot of mold.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
So the manager's recommendation is that we adopt the proposal backflow cross connection control ordinance. And codify it into chapter thirty-eight of the Nashville Town Code. Do I hear a motion from the council that we proceed with that?
Certainly.
Do I have a second or any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Now we'll move to our next item, which is the lease agreement for the commercial building on Body Street. For our um parts of recreation program, and I'd um I'm just going to read part of the summary for the people that are here. It says attached to the council's consideration is the multi-year lease agreement between the town and Nashville will be the tenant. And Adam Williams, the landowner, for renting a three thousand four hundred twenty square foot, one-story commercial building at one oh eight South Body Street. To house the Nashville Park Recreation and Cultural Resources Department. The lease begins August first, twenty twenty, or when the building's upfitting is complete to the town's satisfaction, whichever date is later. And and ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. At the end of the lease, the building can be renewed for another year. The rent is one thousand two hundred a month, plus utilities payable in advance on the first calendar day of each month. Upon signing the lease, the town will pay Mr. Williams nine thousand dollars to complete the following building up fits or improvements, which will be. Uh finished no later than August the fifteenth, twenty twenty. And you see that the eleven items that will take place, the men's restroom, the ladies restroom, a refrigerated drinking fountain. A twelve by fifteen storage room, repaint the building and the owner the um a large thirty-six by fifty-eight open space room. A twelve by fifteen office with shadow resistant twenty-four inch by thirty-two window. A ten by twelve workroom with the shadow resistant window, outward opening front and back doors with panic bar door latches. Illuminated exit lights above front and back doors, clean and remove any and all debris from the exterior portion of the premises. Do I hear any discussions uh from the council about this? I'll turn it over to Randy to discuss it with you.
Um Kate did do a second once-over on this, and she came up with a few cleanup items. Kate did do a second once-over on this and she came up with a few cleanup items. And I wanted to report that I put those in there. One other thing I wanted to report, the size of the ADA restrooms are only seven by ten, not ten by ten. Adam said in order to achieve that large open area space, they would be a little smaller. Now, they still meet all the ADA guidelines as far as the door width, the turnaround area alongside the toilets, the grab bars, the roll under sink with the coverings underneath, so legs can't get scraped and gouged on the pipes underneath. So other than that, there was also some concern about the possible start, will it all be finished, outfitted to our needs by August fifteenth? And I talked to Adam today about that, and he seemed very confident that he could get this all done by the fifteenth of August. Now, I haven't personally looked in the windows the last couple of days to see anything. Maybe some of you have.
I did yesterday, and it looks the same way it did three days ago.
Yeah, it does.
Well, we haven't given him the money yet, so I can see him pausing. And so this is a for sure thing.
We need to give him some money so he can go to work.
Well, it sounded to me like today he was, he was doing quite a bit of that. Kate did point out that, that beginning date in the, that August first and paragraph two, we should just put a blank in there so that when it does get signed by both parties, that would be the commencement date. So I've just put a line in there instead of August first, twenty twenty. You can just simply write in the date.
Wouldn't that influence the ending date also?
Well, I kept the ending date. I wanted to keep it with the fiscal year, so to speak. I know it may not be exactly a two-year period.
Right.
It'd be pretty close. And then that way it's renewable, of course, for the fiscal year, which is our budget.
Any questions for Randy?
I have one question about that. Maybe it's legal leaves on page two, insurance waiver. I don't, it's probably just a misspelled word. After the one million occurrence coverage with a broad from contractual liability, should that be broad form?
Oh, probably. I got this document online from the North Carolina Bar Association.
We need to proofread.
Any other?
Page five. Under sixteen C. Okay, that encompasses our nine thousand dollar investment, right?
Correct.
Any other questions? So there are no other questions. The manager's recommendation is that we execute the multi-year lease with Mr. Williams for one oh eight South Body Street for office and programming space for the PRCR department. Do I hear a motion from the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now let's move to item C on our old business. And this is to continue discussing on constructing an over-the-surface route for excess stormwater to flow through the Windy Oak Drive, Laurel Springs Drive drainage easement during heavy rain events to minimize street flooding on Car Drive, Aubrey Court, and Village Lane. Randy?
The last meeting, we had some discussion about this and I reported that Lee and I had met with Kevin Barnell with Sox Engineering and came up with an idea of putting in an over-the-land overflow route through the Windy Oak and Laurel Springs Drive neighborhoods in a drainage easement that exists already, which should, under good circumstances, prevent Car Drive and Village Lane and Aubrey Court from, you know, getting a foot of water laying over top of them. So I had an opportunity to meet with three contractors now and show them this project. So we are going to be getting prices from three different contractors on it. Originally, I was talking about Windy Oak Drive and Laurel Springs Drive dipping the road surface down. After talking with some of the neighbors in the neighborhood, I don't think the residents would be happy with that. So one of the contractors came up with an idea, which might even be less expensive. Over top the twenty-four-inch pipe that goes under Windy Oak Drive, you know, there's probably four and a half, almost five feet of cover over it. They would excavate and they'd put an eighteen-inch pipe on either side of it. But once the twenty-four-inch got full, the two eighteens would carry the water.
Above it?
Above it. Yes. And then when you get downstream to Laurel Springs Drive, there are twin twenty fours underneath Laurel Springs Drive. And again, we have good cover over the top of them. And instead of dishing the street, we would put three eighteen-inch pipes on top of those. So when the capacity of those two twenty fours is realized and they can't carry anymore, you got three more pipes on top of that. Now, between the blocks, we would still do the over-the-land swale through, through the yards in that forty-foot-wide drainage easement, which would carry the water once the twenty-four-inch pipes can't carry it anymore. The overflow would still have a way to get out of the neighborhood and not cause flooding within the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm not an engineer, but putting those two extra pipes, is that cheaper than just putting a great big pipe, a larger pipe?
It will be because in order to put those, we have conflicts with elevations already. We have sewer main that goes underneath. We got a water line that goes underneath. We really can't go any lower to achieve any greater sized pipe and we really don't want any less cover over top the pipe either. So this, this seems like a compromise. Now, again, it's not a perfect solution.
Does it feel confident that that's going to eliminate the flooding there?
It'll make things much better, yes. When, when the, when the pipes, the twenty-four-inch pipes that are there now, when their capacity is realized, it will give the extra water someplace to go, other than backing up and flooding the homes on either side of the drainage ditch.
Now, are these going to be on such a grade that we're not going to have that issue of just flat where it doesn't move?
It's still flat. It's very flat through there. But, you know, when the water gets that high, it's going to seek, it's going to seek a lower route than what's along either side of it. Therefore, therefore, it's going to flow through.
Randy, before we go any further, we're talking about doing something to alleviate the flooding problem at Car Drive and that area out there. And we've got three residents in here from Indian Trail. Now, what can we, we need to look at them too now.
We do. Well, one thing I wanted to-
And two more come in a little later.
Yes. But they've had, they've had this problem for quite, as far back as I can remember. And Indian Trail was in Nashville before the first houses even built out there.
Right.
So we need to do something to help these people out also.
Sure. Well, what I can say is, this particular neighborhood, we can put forth a solution. Stony Creek, I don't know how we fix that, but there are programs. I have this, FEMA has a buyout program. There, there is a program that Tarboro, because they were impacted by the last two hurricanes, they qualified and are taking advantage of a special buyout program. And the state of North Carolina has a third buyout program. And I'm still waiting for the staff person with North Carolina Emergency Management to talk to about that. I believe he's probably on vacation, which is why I haven't heard from him. But it's my intent to find out all the details on that program. And if we can make application for that to buy out additional homes, I'm going to be all over that thing.
I do understand we cannot move, move Tar River somewhere else, and hopefully they'll understand that also. But we need to give them every opportunity that's possible to try to alleviate this problem or give them a way out.
I think-
Stony Creek has been talked about, you know-
I mean Stony, I mean Stony Creek.
And clearing it out so it drains better. And the Army Corps of Engineers, from what I understand, used to do that. But it only lasts for a couple of years. And they found money is better spent by doing other mitigation, such as buying the properties out that habitually flood and finding those folks a higher ground to live on. Therefore, you know, they're, they're not doing stream straightening or sedimentation removal from non-navigatable waterways such as Stony Creek.
Indian Trail has got the problem just like Trentsville's got.
Oh, does. I mean-
But we've got to do something.
I think somebody mentioned here this evening that those houses should, they would never be built today. They won't. But, you know, forty years ago, they were.
Nobody looked at it.
We had the buyout program in twenty seventeen, FEMA contacted us about it, and that only lasted like for that year. It happened in twenty sixteen. I had to go all the way to Tarboro to do the application. And I gave them everything they needed. And then they got back with us and said they had given out funds. So where did the funds go? She said Nashville didn't have any more funds. We counted it, we lived in. We had to go to Tarboro to do all the paperwork.
Yeah, there is some truth to that. When there's a FEMA, when there's a federal disaster declaration, it's all dependent upon the amount of damage. And then what they set aside for mitigation is a percent of that damage. So the more, unfortunately, the more damage you incur, the greater the mitigation amount. Fortunately for everybody this time around, I don't think there was a whole lot of real serious damage.
Will we be able to help them through this process this time around, once you have some answers?
I sure hope so, yes.
Randy, how many homes have been bought out? I think two.
And ironically, they were purchased the day the neighborhood flooded again. I think six oh nine and then three fifty, five fifty-six were the two houses that were bought out. And they're, they're going to be torn down sometime this summer.
This is all the more reason why we need to hold developers to a higher standard when it comes to where homes are built.
And selling them for their profit.
Exactly.
What number was that, six oh nine?
I believe so.
I'm two houses from there, if I make no mistake. People, two doors from me, they moved out the weekend, just before it flooded. Because they've gotten up in there really bad.
That was probably one of the vows there.
We sit on the very low end. A lot of homes out there have never been flooded.
Yeah, and they won't, thank goodness.
Yeah, I have a question. Why would you allow people to build houses? When my house was, it got flooded in nineteen ninety-nine. I lost everything I had except the clothes on my bed. And then they come in there, build two houses beside my house after the flood came.
Really?
Yeah. That didn't make a whole lot of sense, did it? I think the one that you're talking about, similar type of ditch they're going to throw down, that was built after ninety-nine.
Okay.
Yes.
My house-
They were rental properties.
My house in two thousand, and I could flood. My house flooded, but they wouldn't even strip everything out.
Kate, there was a question in the back?
I was building a quarter railroad body, and I got some serious drainage problems down there. I had eight inches of water this last storm that had come in my shop. And it's a bad feeling when you have the tools and equipment. Luckily, I was there, nothing happened, I'm working on something. And also things are floating. And because the drains won't take it, and I've been cleaning that for two years. And I've had water this year and my building floods. I really need some help from that.
Okay.
Cleaning the drains the best I can, but it's not, that's not the issue. But them drains, you'd be up there kind of here from everybody. Always been like that forever. It gets two feet of water down. I've got some issues on the place, you'll be checking out.
What's that like?
Is that, that line my shop building?
No, they're behind me.
They're behind me?
Yeah, I got the whole floor there. It's, it was awful. Luckily, we were there. We lived and saved a lot of stuff that well-wish and different things. It got really damaged there. I had fans put them down still from the bottom.
Are there any more questions from the council?
Maybe one final thing. I will have, I will have prices from these three contractors on this project for July twenty-ninth meeting, I believe it is.
So all we do tonight is just take a vote for you to pursue that or just-
Don't even need a vote.
Don't even need a vote, do we?
And keep in mind, Sox Engineering is proceeding with that stormwater study too, to make sure that with these improvements, we don't move the problem downstream and cause somebody else.
And Randy, I agree with Council Taylor. We need to look at everybody that had damage and see what we can do to help. Because we are family and we've got to help each other out, take care of each other, and also the gentleman on body and railroad.
I'm glad the ladies came this evening.
Oh, we are. Thank you so much.
I actually didn't even know about this, I was just coming to the media, but the Laurel Springs, I live on Laurel Springs, and the creek actually pumps behind my house and around my house. So with the new improvement, there is no, against risk of it overflowing at that point.
We're going to have that studied by the engineer to make sure that that doesn't happen. That's what our engineer told us, you know, you, you approve it here, you might push it downstream and cause somebody else.
And we don't want to do that. Our new business for tonight is the consideration of a contract with Withers, is that Ravino, for the town of Nashville's twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan. Who's going to talk about that? Randy?
Yes, we, we did an RFQ for professional services for updating our comprehensive plan. And we had eight firms that responded and staff put them through a scoring regimen. And we selected Withers and Ravino consultants, mostly because they've been working with smaller towns such as us on comprehensive plans. And we really liked their public engagement plan with, with the other towns they have done. So we've asked them for a price. They came back and said that they would do that comprehensive plan in basically thirteen months for seventy-two thousand two hundred fifty, seventy-five thousand plus twenty-five hundred, or two thousand two hundred fifty dollars in expenses. I did have Mark Edwards take a look at the contract. And Mark, if you wouldn't mind reviewing for the council, some of the things that you recommended he changed in it.
Well, I would say it was ninety-five percent fine. It was just mainly just clarifying some language, making sure that there were any subsequent agreements to the document, that it was agreed in writing. The substantive thing was just making sure that, that it was written in favor of the contractor, that if there were any liabilities, it protected them. But I just added in there that it protected equally the town and the contractor, just to make it even. Everything else in there was making sure that the language was consistent with the exhibit A or exhibit one and the contract itself. And so just clarifying the terms. The only other thing I would mention is just now that we've gone through this pandemic and there's lots of contracts out there with a paragraph in there for force majeure that nobody's ever had to look at or worry about. I mean, I looked at it twice, but the force majeure paragraph is in there. If, if the pandemic causes the contractor not to be able to perform as they say they're going to perform, as in all contracts that have been out there before, they have the ability to not necessarily perform on the timetable. And just now that we've kind of gone through this, this pandemic, we're having to look at those paragraphs. But there's really nothing to change. And I would say the main thing is that you chose the contractor that you have trust in. And you hopefully never have to look at the contract language, ever look at that paragraph, that if anything ever came up, you're choosing somebody you trust so that you could work it out without even having to resort to calling, calling me.
And Randy, twenty-five words or less, tell our citizens what this plan is.
Well, that I might refer to.
Okay, Randy. You know, what we're talking about. I saw someone say-
I would say, as, as a citizen and not necessarily a lawyer, it is interesting to read. And I do look forward to seeing how this company engages with the town coming up. But I'm speaking more of a citizen. As the lawyer, as far as what it does, I refer to that a bit.
Thanks, Matt. Mayor, what the comprehensive plan is, it's a written document that we have public input on from the entire community. And it's our plan for how we're going to grow and regulate our growth or facilitate our growth going in the future. The biggest component of a comprehensive plan is that future land use now. And, you know, we refer to that nearly every reserving we have in a consistency- And, you know, we refer to that nearly every rezoning we have in a consistency statement. Is the rezoning of this property consistent with the land use plan? Yes or no? And, you know, as we found out with the last two rezonings, you know, sometimes plans change, so to speak. It's been since two thousand and eleven, since our last comprehensive plan was done, the last future land use plan. And there've been a lot, there's been a lot of growth and development in Nashville and around Nashville since that. And some of those growth patterns that were thought to be what the town would see in two thousand and eleven didn't happen. And then we've had areas that have grown by leaps and bounds that everybody thought would continue to be a farm field. So, it's gotta be somewhat of a fluid document. It's gotta be something that can be referred to and amended from time to time. Therein lies the need to update the comprehensive plan. And some of the public participation that this firm has talked about, you know, focus groups, they talked about surveys online and paper. They talked about in-person interviews with key community holders. They talked about neighborhood meetings and in actual neighborhoods to see what the people who live in those neighborhoods want to see their town be or strive to be in the future.
I see it. When I think of it, I think of it, we getting all together and getting our vision for the town. So that we'll have a vision, because you know it says without a vision you perish. And we certainly don't want to perish. So, I see it as our vision for the town of growing and using our land the best that we can.
So, the changes that Mark had for the contract, Withers and rather have incorporated those into the agreement.
So, we already have incorporated agreement? We already have the updated one here?
No, you don't.
Okay.
I got it late Saturday.
Okay.
And I did.
As far as the timeframe, are we, we are under a time constraint, right? Don't we have a deadline that we need to meet?
Thirteen months, start to finish, and they're gonna begin in August.
But don't we have a deadline that we need to hit? Like, doesn't it need to be updated within a certain period of time, otherwise?
Yes, July first of two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, so we still have some room if we do have an active bad situation.
Now, what he was alluding to about, you know, it may postpone some of the public participation if we're unable to safely gather groups of people. That might delay it a little bit.
Okay, but not to the point where we're gonna be now?
I don't think so.
Up to.
You know, I'm half expecting the General Assembly to extend this date in light of the pandemic, in light of, you know, many towns our size were caught somewhat off-guard and their comp plans lagging significantly behind ten years. And it was my concern when we put out the RFQ if we would even get anybody, thinking the consultants have already been retained by other towns that were a little more on the ball. But the fact that we got eight proposals, I was pleased with that.
Randy, where is this company located? Withers Ravino?
They're in Cary, I believe.
I couldn't find an address.
Mayor, I'm familiar with the firm, having worked with them previously. They're very competent, professional group and they usually do a very good product. So, I'm excited that the town will be working there.
Now, do we need to do anything with this or this just information?
A motion in second to approve, execute the agreement.
Okay.
You would.
Okay, any questions for the council? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve the continuation of this plan?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That's exciting. Town manager, do you have a report for us if anything?
Mayor, no, I really don't unless the council has some question about something that might be ongoing.
I do have one question. Are we, are we, are we from behind the eight ball with the state for the cleanup at the cemetery and the, and the old sewer plant?
We are not. Those are complete. And the EBIT numbers with NCDQ Department of Waste Management is coming Thursday to do the final inspection.
Okay, alright.
Is that right, Lee? Correct, eleven o'clock.
Be sure and let us know the results.
Yep.
Well, we better get a gold star.
Randy had a question about the sewage overflow manholes.
Yes.
How did that pan out? That had to be reported, right?
Yes, Lee was required to report and come up with an estimate on the volume and report that to NCDQ. And the cause of that, obviously, we have an older town and we, a lot of the sewer lines in town are old. There was clay-balled tile and there's joints every two and a half feet. And when the ground gets that saturated, there aren't any gas, it's in that old piping. It acts like field tile and the groundwater runs into it and it overflow, it overfills. And then things downstream bubble up. It's not an uncommon occurrence. You don't hear about it very often, but it happens every town our age unless they've completely gone through and replaced their sanitary sewer collection systems.
What were the two locations? Body Church and what was the other one?
Yeah, Body and Church and nine twenty-one North Burke Street was the, which is right at the downtown where our outfall starts, going down to Rockhampton.
Thank you, Randy. Are there any comments from the council?
Well, Mayor, I'd like to start, to all the citizens that showed up tonight to voice your concerns about the water problems that we all went through here in Nashville, I'm glad to see you here. But I would like for you to come even when you don't have a problem. So, you can know what's going on in Nashville, because he just mentioned something a few minutes ago. And the lady over here says, what are you talking about? Well, you hear it straight from the horse's mouth, the old saying, don't wait for your neighbor to tell you. Find out for yourself. So, I personally invite everybody that's here tonight that normally come, that, you know, you know what schedule they, we meet every, the same time every month. So, you're all welcome to come, sit in. If you don't have anything to say, at least you just learned something.
I'm glad to see everybody here again. We've been meeting in an empty room for quite a while now, even though we all are here masked. But thank you for that as well. And I too want to encourage all of our citizens. Anytime you have any problems or issues, please reach out to us and let us know so that we can try to help in any way that we can.
I agree with that. And if there's ever a time that you can't make it to a council meeting, just put an email, make a phone call. We're happy to help. And I'm very happy to see everyone here tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, the meetings are every first Tuesday, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And our agenda's the last Wednesday of the agenda meeting.
It's the Wednesday before that Tuesday.
Louise?
Um, I'd like to welcome Ryan King. Thank you. I hope you have a lot of municipal experience.
Not leaning on Mr. Edwards.
One other thing I'd like to mention, the comprehensive plan that was done in two thousand and eleven was done by Preston Mitchell and Gene Foxworth, two young guys who moved in. And they did it in-house and they did it very economically. In other words, it didn't cost seventy-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So, this is to me a big figure. And I understand that it needs to be done. But I saw what people could do in-house. And they did a very good job, I thought, anyway. So, now inflation, seventy-two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Louise. And again, I thank you so much for coming out. And I want you to know and always remember, you elected us. We're here to serve you. You aren't serving us. But if us, you know, we can't do anything about something, we do not know. I just appreciate. This weekend, I had two people call me about something going on. And I just appreciate that they trusted us enough to call us and ask us questions. And that's what we want you to do. We're here for you. If there are no other questions, do I hear a motion that we adjourn this meeting? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Alright.